Good afternoon and welcome.
Yeah, good afternoon. I'm waiting for my other people to gather here. Good afternoon, honorable committee members. My name is Jim Devine and I'm an advocate with Homeless Voices for Justice. I'm here today to testify in opposition to the proposed changes to general assistance, temporary assistance for needy families, SSI, and supplemental nutrition assistance program as they're laid out in the government's 2016-2017 biannual budget. As someone who has been previously homeless and currently lives in poverty, I have met many people who rely on GA, TANF, SSI, and SNAP to get by. I myself rely on SNAP to provide food for myself. These programs help individuals and families access food and other necessities for daily life. Without these programs, people would suffer. If you've been to the Prowl Street Soup Kitchen when it's closing, you would likely see people washing dishes, mopping the floors, and cleaning up after hundreds of people that finished eating them. Many of them are New Mainers, people who have fled their native countries to escape persecution, violence, and war. They're doing this as workfare in exchange for their GA vouchers. They're well-educated, hard-working people looking for a new beginning, one that is free from fear and violence. Many have held positions as doctors, lawyers, and other government officials in the native country. Unfortunately, GA is one of the only programs they qualify for, helped them as their way to get work authorization. GA helps people like Jao Nargongo and his family. Jao lives with his wife and four children, ages 14, 12, 8, and 2, in Golem. Their asylum seekers from Angola have been receiving GA for seven months to help pay for their rent and food. He does not have work authorization yet. They're hoping to have so in August. Until then, GA had helped Jao take care of his family until he is able to work. Without it, they would be homeless. Cutting off individuals and families through general assistance SNAP, SSI, and TANF would force them to visit soup kitchens, food banquets, and shelters more often. And those services are already overburdened and see record numbers of people. Ignorance is a way for people who need it is the wrong thing to do. General assistance is essential for keeping people housed, for putting food on the table, providing a warm home. But not only that, GA helps provide emergency shelter for people in a safe and warm place to sleep at night. Cutting reimbursement fees like Golem and Lewiston have a devastating impact on their residents. It would mean many people would lose their homes and not be able to get their life prescriptions filled. People who are very little to begin with, taking away this last resort is nothing short of cruel. No one should have to live in fear of not being able to provide food for their families or the possibility of becoming homeless. People who use GA, SNAP, SSI, and TANF do so even if they need to survive because there are so few other resources to help them provide for their basic necessities: shelter and food. Those cuts, these programs, would be devastating for many of our most vulnerable residents. I urge you to oppose these proposed changes. In my practice, there's some additional stories of people who have access to general assistance. There are people who are we have met in Prowl Street and unable to be here but wanted to share their story with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Devine. Thank you. Please let them know that we appreciate your stories. Representative Vittin has a question.
Sure he does.
Thank you. We know each other, don't we?
Yes.
Actually, Jim, I was out in the hallway. I started coming to the voting. I read back in because I just appreciate your comments very much. You know, I think we just came off the coldest February in corporate history again in Anna, Portland. Maybe one of your people with you could tell me what it is like to be a homeless person this February in Portland?
Well, I could tell you. I know some friends of mine do sleep outside and I say, "I can't find you because you haven't lived or survived it. It's very cold." I know some people who do sleep outside. Somebody else wants to say something, too.
I was going to invite those standing with you, Mr. Devine, to introduce themselves.
Sure.
Welcome.
I'm Jeff Pan. I'm an advocate for homeless voices for justice.
Welcome.
My name is Pierre Kayamba. I have 17 years. My name is Gabriel Tumuba.
Hi, I'm Mary Jo Scofield and I'm an advocate for homeless voices for justice.
Representative Vittin, would you have a follow-up?
No, I'm all set. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jim. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you all for being here, too.
Thank you. Of course, for sure.
Jean-Henri Oyemana. Welcome back.
Thank you. I'll start to apologize for English, which is a new language for me. For any mistake or mis-text, I'll try to understand. Good afternoon. My name is Jean-Henri Oyemana from Bolondi and I'm speaking in opposition to eliminating general assistance. I'm an asylum seeker and I have been in this country for 10 months. I left my country after suffering violence and persecution by the government. By the grace of God, I was able to come in this country, which will come in. In my country of origin, I work in the communication sector. When I got here, majorly I started questioning myself. How am I going to survive? Why do general assistance care, help me support my needs, paying my rent, my food, and most importantly, my medicine? Until this day, while I'm waiting to receive my work permits, I have tried to do all my best to integrate with the American society. For example, going to school to learn English at the adult medication and hope house, volunteering at Oak Dayway and working in the workfare program at a shelter, etc., and other places in Portland. Having a place to stay and having something to eat allowed me to go a little more far in getting training in how to become mediator in a conflict situation, a cooking class, and events. I was able to get three certificates or to be graduate pretens. In few words, general assistance is a family. It's our family in this country. A family that takes care of our life, just like parents take care of their kids. But for a short time, while it's needed for me, eliminating the general assistance program is like telling me, "Just go back where you're from," and going back home because putting my life in danger of persecution and violence. We hope you ask you to keep supporting us until when we be able to support ourselves. When we get work permits and get a job and repay what the state of man has given us by paying tax, for example. I'm very proud and happy of being a part of the economy, the economic and the social society of men. Please keep helping us, not just temporarily, but by keeping the general assistance. Together as one, everything is possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And you did very well, much better than I would have probably speaking before you. So, thank you. Next is Toma Bakula and then Gabriel Unguwa and then Jean-Jacques Ngouba. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Fabrice. Actually, I have to speak with Toma because I have to... My name is Fabrice. I live in Westbrook. My children have gone to school in Portman and Westbrook and they are all proud to call me in home. I came to Burundi in September 2013. Burundi is one of the poorest nations in the world and is still struggling to recover from a civil war in which hundreds of thousands of people were killed. It is still a very dangerous and poor place and that is why I came here with my children. The situation in Burundi at this moment as we speak is critically dangerous and the news reports on a daily basis are frightening. I encourage anyone in the room who is unfamiliar with Burundi's situation to gain some understanding as this will help you better understand those that are in the position I was in so recently. We came here with very little and when we first arrived, we lived in a shelter. We were thankful to be safe and ready to begin building a new life here. With the help of general assistance, we were able to move into our home in Westbrook. General assistance helped us to pay for our rent, electricity, and things like medicine for me and my children. I am so grateful that my children have a home that is safe, where they can get ready for school and do their homework and be normal, happy children. I am thankful for all of the help that allowed us to survive here. At first, I was not authorized to work in the United States. While I waited for my work authorization, I spent my time as a volunteer at Learning Works, helping children. I also had to start the African Services Corps to help other immigrants where they are waiting for asylum. I received my work authorization in August last year and in November, I was hired as a full-time administrative assistant with the Opportunity Alliance, where I am able to draw on my accounting and clerical skills to help me programming for people in need, including those who are in the same position I was just a few months ago. This is something that brings me a lot of happiness. I am also proud to say that I am now able to pay my rent and utilities on my own without assistance. I stood here a year ago as an asylum seeker without authorization to work, with my faith hanging in the balance. Today, I am employed and here to be for those who are in desperate need of our help. When I heard a year ago that Governor's page wanted to stop helping asylum seekers and refugees through general assistance, I became very scared. I thought, "What will we do?" Moving back to Burundi is not an option. It is a war-torn country and my children will not be safe there. We have no other way to pay rent and we have to move back to shelter. Today, with the governor again trying to stop helping refugees and asylum seekers, what will happen to my fellow community members? These are people in the same position I was in just a few months ago. And in general assistance for immigrants, we leave many families homeless and that will make it hard for us to get on our feet and become helpful members of the society. I hope when we decide to make this change, I consider myself a man now and I have come to understand that we are men who care about their neighbors and we would never support a rule change that threatens the very survival of good people, their families, and their children. We should not forget, one day, those who are helping now will be grateful and supportive neighbors of you and me. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you very much. And I apologize as we were trying to sort out the confusion up here about the list. I interrupted your testimony. Representative Vittin has a question.
I just want to thank you for sharing your story and really want to wish you continued success. It sounds like, again, you are a success story. I hope your children have the same wonderful experience growing up a much quicker than my children had at law schools and, you know, are successful leaders just like you are. So, thank you for coming up today.
Thank you. Representative Campbell, do you have a question or question?
Thank you. I just wanted to express something similar as Representative Vittin just congratulating you on your successful life as an American dreamer coming to America. You worked hard, went to school, received assistance temporarily, and now you have a job. My question is, and I'm not asking for a member, but do you know how much you received in general assistance? Do you think over the course of your working life, you'll pay more in taxes than you receive from general assistance?
Yeah, just ask. Can you be more specific?
Well, you received general assistance temporarily, a certain amount of money, and now you're paying taxes now that you're working. Do you think the taxes are more than you receive?
I think that's a confusing question.
My guess is that the question is, yes, she will pay more in taxes over the course of her lifetime if she receives the general assistance.
Yeah. And I'm also happy to pay taxes as an American.
And can you just clarify the question I had? Is Toma still here? Or Toma gets here? Okay, so you will call on him later when we get to where you were on the list. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Gabriel Unguwa and then Jean-Jacques Ngouba and then Omi, then Dana Hes. Gabriel, please come forward. Welcome back to all of you.
Good afternoon. I'm Gabriel and I'm here to...
Up fine, of course.
I say, "Je suis Gabriel Ngouba."
I'm here. So, I'm here for Gabriel. My name is Gabriel and this is my husband.
Je suis Jean-Jacques Ngouba.
My name is Jean-Jacques Ngouba.
Nous sommes Gabonais.
We are Gabonians.
Et nous sommes ici depuis deux mois.
So, we are here two months ago.
Okay. Déjà, nous vous remercions.
First of all, we thank you
Nous cédé la parole.
to allow us to speak.
Nous sommes Gabonais.
We are from Gabon.
Nous ne sommes pas nombreux ici déjà.
So, we are not enough Gabonians here in Maine.
Nous sommes venus ici à Maine.
So, we came here in Maine.
Et nous allons être succincts parce que nous n'avons pas pu écrire comme les autres notre histoire sur partie.
So, we'll be brief because we didn't have an opportunity to write like others our story.
Comme je le disais tantôt, nous sommes pasteurs. Excusez-moi. Nous sommes d'abord un ministère au Gabon.
So, as I say, we are pastors. So, my wife and I, we have ministry in Gabon.
Hormis le domaine spirituel, nous nous processions socialement.
So, we are in a spiritual field, but also we were working in a social field.
Et comme sont venus ici au Maine.
So, when we arrived here in Maine.
En fait, nous avons fui notre pays.
We fled our country.
Et quand nous sommes venus ici au Maine.
So, once we arrived here in Maine.
Nous avons rencontré ou nous avons constaté quelque chose que nous n'avons pas pu rencontrer ailleurs.
So, we have seen something that we did not see anywhere else.
Et plus spécifiquement, c'est dans le GEA.
Particularly in general assistance.
On avait jamais imaginé voir une organisation comme cela dans un état.
So, we never thought that we will find an agency such as general assistance in the United States.
Chez nous au Gabon, nous avons tenté de faire.
In Gabon, this is something that we tried to do for our church.
Mais malheureusement, ce que nous avons constaté, ce que nous avons reçu, ça nous a permis de fuir. C'est parce que, en fait, le GEA veut subir.
So, the reason why we fled our country because when we tried to do the same thing that general assistance is doing here, the government of Gabon tried to shut down our activities.
C'est un indésirable parmi tant d'autres qui nous ont causé vraiment le gouvernement. Quand nous avons vu ici la GEA, nous avons loué le Seigneur parce que le GEA est en train de s'occuper pratiquement de toute personne, de toute couleur, sans distinction de race et de couleur.
So, this is one among others issues that we had in Gabon before we fled. And when we arrived in Maine and we saw what general assistance is doing to all of these people in need, so we were grateful because we appreciate the way how general assistance is helping all of these people in need without discriminating because of race, religion, or origin of these people.
Si c'était pas le GEA, on ne sait pas comment on serait. Ça s'appelle affaire depuis deux mois. Ça va peut-être, je ne dis pas moi particulièrement. Ça va peut-être mort.
So, without GA, we don't know how we can survive today since we arrived here two months ago. And maybe if we did not have such assistance, I would personally die.
Sur le problème de santé.
Because of my health condition.
Sur le problème de logement.
Because of the housing issues.
Sur le problème d'alimentation.
And the food issues.
Ce sont les personnes que je n'ai jamais parlé mais qui montraient comme c'était les personnes de ma famille.
So, these people who assisted me are people that I never know but feeling me like one of their family members.
On a amené nos enfants et nous sommes venus ici.
So, we left behind our kids and then we came here.
Et je crois que si le GEA s'est arrivé à être fermé, beaucoup de ceux là qui sont, c'est tellement comme nous, qui sont aussi dans le Maine, ils sont de tripassés.
So, if the general assistance is stopped, many people like us will be in trouble.
Donc, je vous prie vraiment, vous plaignez mon équipe de moi, vraiment que le GEA ne ferme pas parce que beaucoup sont aussi, c'est tellement la même situation. Nous avons une adresse de t'assister par le GEA mais si le GEA ferme, certains qui sont en bord, qui sont en bord de la ville, ils seront, et même nous aussi, ils seront de tripassés de subir.
So, please support continuing general assistance for people in need because without that, it will be very hard for people like me and others in need.
Je vous remercie.
Thank you.
And thank you for sharing your story, Professor. Omi. And then Dana Hes, and then Paul, and then Colin Hope. Good afternoon.
My testimony passed out and I won't read from it. I'm sure you can read yourselves. My name is Omi Amor Singham and I'm public policy counsel for the American Civil Rights Union of Maine and today we are here in opposition to parts Double D and Triple D of the proposed budget. Barring access to public benefits based on immigration status alone raises equal protection concerns. The Fourteenth Amendment protections are guaranteed to every person, not just citizens. The proposed cut to GA in Part Triple D impermissively discriminates against non-citizens in violation of the Fourteenth Amendment, an issue made clear in the Supreme Court case of Graham v. Richardson which is cited in my testimony. With respect to Part Double Z, the commissioner seems to be under the impression that federal law requires Maine to eliminate aid to non-citizens. That is not correct. To the contrary, federal law explicitly allows states to provide assistance to immigrants. Furthermore, we have not heard that Maine is at risk of federal sanctions for its inclusive benefits programs. As this committee on the commissioner knows well, the federal government is not shy about taking Maine to task when Maine is out of step with federal rules. Finally, I would just like to point out that SSI is assistance for individuals with disabilities. So, cutting SSI for immigrants means eliminating support for those with disabilities, which seems contrary to the commissioner's stated priorities in the budget. And with that, I will yield my time and take any questions.
Thank you. And see you tomorrow. Thank you. Dana Hes? Dana Hes, sorry.
Good evening, Senator Amber. Representative Vittin, numbers with many. I also will not read my testimony because, again, I trust that you will read it. But I just wanted to highlight a couple parts that I felt like probably weren't shared with you today. We are also here in opposition to parts Double D and Triple D. And, you know, as we testified in years past and I'm sure you'll hear from us again, general assistance is most often used by women who are escaping domestic violence. It really is the last resort, the financial support, and we feel really strongly that all women are deserving of the help that they need to escape violent situations regardless of their immigration status. And I also just wanted to, you know, to highlight that that also includes the state-funded Food Subpoent Program, the state-funded TANF financial assistance because there are available lawfully present immigrants who fit one of four categories and one of those includes victims of domestic violence. By definition, TANF serves families with children. So, if we're talking about people who qualify under domestic violence exception, we're also talking about entire families that have suffered with that. And unfortunately, women in immigrant and asylum communities have unique and, you know, unaddressed risks for experiencing intimate partner violence. And it's safe to say that the people targeted by these proposals are extremely vulnerable: poverty, homelessness, and further violence. It's hard to imagine that in a state that prides itself on being tough on domestic violence would focus so specifically on eliminating assistance that goes directly to victims or those at risk because of their nationality. It's hard to imagine that we would be funding tax cuts that largely benefit the wealthiest among us by denying food and shelter and heat to those fleeing violence and persecution, the lives of which most of us can't really imagine. Maine continues to have the highest median age of any state in our nation. Our economy would benefit from welcoming immigrants and giving them the temporary assistance they need to wait for permission from the federal government to work. New Mainers are eager to get back to their new home and our state will be more vibrant for their presence. We urge you to reject these proposals and I'm glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Dana. See you, good question. Do you have a phone?
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for your being patient. It's been a long day for you. I know that. I noticed that it's kind of been... So, I want to try to be brief as many things have been said by other people. So, you may just get time to read my writing testimony. My name is Leo Paul. I'm 45 years old. I'm a just now. And I came to this country in 2011 as an asylum seeker. In my country, I did well. I used to do something good. I have been living in good way. However, I could not stay there due to persecution and torture that I've been just like subject to. So, I used to go in different countries during my vacation, take my vacation. However, I could not. And being in this country, that was my last choice. Wasn't the first choice. The first choice should be stay in my country and performing, doing, you know, keep working in my country, my culture, everything, just with my family. I left my family behind. My family joined me in 2012. I was lucky. Other people stayed just behind me. They won't just like do far more than five years without just seeing their families. So, I've been working as a community worker in my country. I worked, I opened my own company and worked as a community development consultant for seven years and that for Norway, Belgium, Switzerland, American Red Cross in different countries and Africa. So as many asylum seekers, we've been targeted because we are indicated. And we've been working and seeing some, you know, injustice. And then we've been just picking out all that, and then we're targeted by the government. So that's the reason why myself fled my country in two thousand eleven. And that was not my first time to come in the United States. Because the first time I came to this state was in two thousand and five. I used to come and go, I could stay that time if this place was really a nice place to stay for me as a first choice. So fleeing the country, it's a traumatic, it's a severe traumatic experience. For me, especially after just being tortured, physically tortured and mentally tortured. I wish none should experience my whole story. My only hope, the hope that we got, when you've just fleeing your country, you need to get a safety place to stay. It's not about being threatened. So what includes being, what includes being like an asylum seeker in Maine, being said by every speaker. So I'm not gonna take a long time about that because it includes difficulty obtaining residency, which you need to have. You run around it, otherwise you will be on the street. So we've been, we've been lucky to have general assistance. Restriction to the social services, only general assistance just may help people. Restriction to the healthcare. We cannot, you cannot just use, you know, health utilities without any health insurance. Restriction to the right of work, that's hard too, because you don't have the work authorization, how are you gonna work? It's so sad and frustrating when you are not able to work due to, you are not incapable. It's not because you are unskilled, not because you are disabled, you're not unwilling to work just because of your immigration status. It's very frustrating. We've been working and when we got here, we just put in a need to work. Then I can just manage my stress, my depression, my trauma, everything, so I can work. That's why you will see everyone behind me, all people, they are hard workers. That's the way we manage, that's the way we cope with our stress, with our PTSD. And conclusion, let's just remind you about American Convention of Human Rights, Article One, stat. The statute parties to this convention undertake to respect the rights and freedoms recognized herein to ensure to all persons subject to their jurisdiction. To free and full exercise those rights and freedoms without any discrimination for reasons of race, color, sex, language, religion, political or other opinions, national, social, origin, economic, status or any other social condition. Let me quote John Kennedy, who stated that "The rights of every man are diminished when the rights of one man are threatened." Shooting down general assistance to asylum seekers is not only threatening asylum seekers, it's diminishing the rights of men to protect other human beings. Please, John, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. And I'll play it again.
I have my gift for the committee. And I understand under the obligation that I have that I only have to bring a gift to the committee that I served on. And that was Health and Human Services and I'm more than happy to provide the gift to you. But knowing how special the Appropriations Committee believes that it is. I also brought enough for the Appropriations Committee as well. And I'm sorry, I'm sure there's some people on Health and Human Services that would find this gift not to be as healthy. But the snack bar was limited in its choices, so this is what I was able to make available for people. So thank you very much and I appreciate your patience and have the opportunity to be here to speak with you today. Almost once or twice a week this time of year, people come up to me and they say, what's the most effective way that you can provide testimony to the legislature? And I say, first, be focused on facts, be respectful and be brief. And I promise you, the first too. I'm not sure the brevity will be a part A.
I'll enforce the third, okay?
But I'll try to be respectful and try to focus on facts. Portland's been called an outlier in general assistance. If you look at the handout to the very second page, yes, in fact, we are an outlier. We spend substantially more than any other community, any other city in the state of Maine. So you would question, why are we an outlier? We are an outlier, as many people have testified. We have a disproportionate number of people that come from other countries that are new mayors that settle in the city of Portland. And if you look at the breakdown we have, you see it consistently from two thousand nine to two thousand fourteen. We've had a significant increase in rental costs, housing costs, food costs. That are directly associated to the fact that we have people, asylum seekers, visa holders, refugees coming to the city. The Commissioner of Health and Human Services never called us and asked us why we're an outlier. We would have been more than happy to explain to her and to her staff why we're an outlier. That question was never asked. This never has anything to do with poverty. Poverty rates and comparisons between Louisville, Portland and Bangor are irrelevant in this discussion. What is relevant in the discussion is the population that we are serving and we are seeing in the city of Portland is distinctly different. And is an outlier to every other community in the state of Maine. I also, it's been charged that general assistance spending has been going out of control. And that there needs to be some way of controlling spending better. In fact, the state of Maine general assistance, nineteen ninety-one, spent almost twenty million dollars on general assistance. We're now spending close to twelve, thirteen million. So we're spending substantially less as a state on general assistance than we were in the early nineteen nineties. And this is the one fact that I would put on the table that John Martin might be able to.